Everybody, welcome to the City of Utica Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Rousseau, would you lead us, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzie.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here, all present, and we have a quorum. Tonight, we have two public hearings. We'll get to that in a bit. It's scheduled to start at seven forty-five. We also have a very special event tonight. Chief Kaluzny, if you could go to the lectern, we have the honor of swearing in two new officers this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. It is really my privilege to stand up here, and this is one of those times, as chief, that I'm proud to stand up here and welcome two members to the Utica Police Department. One of the great things that we always kind of talk about our department is that small family aspect that we have here. And as you can tell, we've got many members of our department here already to recognize two of our newest members here to the department. We'll start first with Officer Reese Stewart. Officer Stewart began her career here at the Utica Police Department as a dispatcher back in February of two thousand and twenty-three. Prior to joining here at the city, she attended Oakland University and graduated with honors with her criminal justice, or her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. While in dispatch, Officer Reese really took to the position really fast. She learned really quick and quickly became an integral member of the department. I can remember when Officer Reese had talked to me in the morning and said, "Chief, I'd like to talk to you if you have a couple minutes." I said, "Absolutely, come on in, what's going on?" She said, "I would really, if I had the opportunity, I would love to become a police officer here within the City of Utica." Knowing that I couldn't pass on this position and that we really had an excellent employee here, I made the decision to invest in her and sponsor and send her to the Police Academy. Officer Stewart just graduated the Police Academy just this last Friday after eighteen weeks of grueling physical and mental challenges. They went through everything that you can imagine to get themselves ready to now learn a whole career of law enforcement here. Officer Stewart enjoys spending time with her family and friends and traveling when she can in her off time. Joining her today is her mother Cynthia and her father Bruce. Sorry about that. We'd like to welcome Officer Stewart to the noble profession of law enforcement and really as a member of the family here at the Utica Police Department. Officer Stewart, if you could please meet the mayor up front to be sworn in. Pinning Officer Stewart on her badge will be her father Bruce.
If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you, sir.
Our workman's comp, I don't know.
Thank you.
If you could, everyone would like to shake your hand and welcome you aboard. Happy to have you.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, Council, and members of the public, it is my honor and privilege here to introduce you to Cameron Smale. Cameron came to the department here, and I remember when he approached and approached me and said, "You know, Chief Kaluzny, I'd really like to have the opportunity to attend the Police Department." Cameron's kind of in a unique position in that he comes to the department without being a member of dispatch or a member of the patrol unit or prior service. So I was really enthused and excited about bringing Cameron onto the department and kind of created a cadet position. So Cameron was the first cadet of the City of Utica to be able to sponsor and send him to the Police Academy. One of the really interesting things or good things about Cameron that I think is probably the first officer is Cameron is a member or a citizen of the City of Utica, which is really a great thing to bring in a resident of the city and be able to promote him to the Police Department. I can tell each and every one of my officers here care dearly about the city, but I know Cameron does, probably a little bit more than each of us here. Officer Smale here accepted this sponsorship from the city and really worked diligently prior to going to the academy of learning the rules, the regulations, some of our policies, and started really getting ingrained in policing prior to attending the academy. Officer Smale graduated from Wayne State University with honors, obtaining his bachelor's degree in accounting, and worked for Shelby Police Department for a small period as a cadet. So we're really glad to steal him from Shelby and bring him here into the Utica Police Department here. After graduating here on Friday at the McComb Police Academy, sorry, Director, Officer Smale returned to the department and was really eager to go. One of the greatest things was seeing Cameron Monday morning, excited, "Good morning, Chief," and really had a great smile on his face and was just excited to be at the department. Officer Smale is excited to take the oath and service community that he calls home as a police officer here. On his off time, Officer Smale enjoys hunting, fishing, and training in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. Here today with Officer Smale is his mother Stacy, his father Craig, and his grandfather Richard. We'd like to welcome Officer Smale to the noble police profession, or noble profession of law enforcement as a member of the Utica Police Department. Officer Smale, if you could please meet the mayor up at the front there. And pinning the badge on Officer Smale will be his grandfather Richard, who I just had to say is a former.
If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And your grandson made it real easy on you. If you could, everyone would like to welcome you aboard. Happy to have you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well, there's plenty of excitement left on the agenda tonight. I know a lot of you are anxious to stick around, but you're welcome to leave if you need to.
Got excited stuff ahead.
That's right. Congratulations.
The fun was literally beside it.
At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for public comments. Everyone will be allotted three minutes to address council. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to anything that is listed on the agenda tonight? All right, moving on. Consent business. I do need a motion to remove approval of the agenda as there are two agenda changes. Those changes are adding number VF1, which is signed for the Run Drugs Out of Town 5K Walk and Run. And number two is property use agreement with GSE, which will be number VG14A. So I'd be looking for a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Trenzie, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Now I would be looking for a motion to approve the remaining items in consent.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We have no unfinished business and no correspondence. I'm going to move forward with new business because we have three minutes before public hearing time. That would be the Utica Lions donation. I believe Mr. Pro and Mr. Huchala are here tonight.
Yeah, we're just here to thank the City of Utica and all the departments and give a donation to the departments and also the library and Parks and Rec. So we have DPW.
He's excused tonight. He had a family matter.
The Police Department, he's right outside. Fire Department.
Thank you, Bernie.
And anyone from the library?
Oh, you're lucky.
And Parks and Rec.
I'm Speaker Madam Herbert.
Okay.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Do you want to give the mayor Gus the other two checks, please? Okay, thank you. And we would like to mention, Sunday, June ninth, we are having the annual pancake breakfast. It is donation only. It is really a community thing. If you can, you know, bring out your family, have some breakfast with your neighbors, and have a good time.
What day is it?
June ninth.
June ninth, it's Sunday, and it's probably been going on for like fifty years because I was a little kid when I went to it first, and I'm old now, so.
What time does it start, Rick?
Huh?
What time does it start?
It goes, it starts at eight and goes till noon. We'll still be there if someone comes on, so. And we'll have the, all you can eat pancakes, it's free, so, and sausage, and we have the Lions egg sandwich also, so.
So good.
Hope to see you there, and thank you so much again to the city and all the departments. Without you guys, all the fundraisers and stuff, charities that we help with, wouldn't be able to do it so easily without you, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're one click away from public hearing. I would be looking for a motion to enter public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Trenzie. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We're now in public hearing. First petitioner is fireworks sales and temporary tents at one three two seven seven, one three 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 Hall Road, Thunder King. Mr. Johnson, if you could step up to the lectern and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going in front of the board, as I do every year, put a tent next to the Krispy Kreme on Hall Road. Everything's the same, the tent's going to be located the same, the signage is the same. I haven't changed anything. It's pretty easy, I just set it all the same way.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? I know that he was recommended by planning. I don't think they had any concerns at all. Is anyone here from the public that would like to address this issue? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next public hearing is for four four eight zero zero Van Dyke Dynamite Fireworks. Is that, yes, could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Gina Smaro with Dynamite Fireworks. I live in Shelby Township. My son and I have a firework business, we've been doing it for five years in Shelby and in Sterling Heights. It's our first time in Utica, and too bad for those guys leaving early, I was going to offer everyone fifty percent off, sorry Virgil, I'm trying to get these customers. We were here two weeks ago for the planning meeting, we have our state license, submitted all the required paperwork, and just looking for a final approval. And we'll be up by Hydro Pros on Van Dyke between Hall Road and Canal. No DJ, I was asked that question last time, I don't know why, but no DJ.
I'm never going to live that down. Well, we have residents on McKay that are very close to that parking lot, and I was just making sure there wasn't going to be any loud partying or anything like that for our residents on McKay.
No, unfortunately.
Does anyone from council have any question? And we could deliberate when we get to that point on the agenda. Anyone from the public that has any thing that they'd like to address with this issue? I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
I would be looking for a motion to return to regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We are back in regular session. First item on the agenda under new business is the temporary tent on Hall Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I make a motion to approve the temporary tent use thirteen two seven seven to thirteen three 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 Hall Road as presented by the petitioner.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Are they going to be a DJ? There they actually could, because there's no residents nearby. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
No, yes, I'm sorry.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Next, under new business, is the temporary tent for fireworks sales at four four eight zero zero Van Dyke.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I make a motion to approve the fireworks sales temporary tent use at forty-four eight hundred Van Dyke as presented by the petitioner.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. I'll start off discussion. I know there was some talk about the signs when you came to planning, has that all been resolved?
Yes, we're following whatever the order is, whatever's in the order is something.
And for both of you, for you and Mr. Johnson, you're both subject to a tent inspection, I believe, by building or fire.
Building.
Building, so that's part of the process as well, you're aware of that, right? Any other discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. So fifty percent off, right?
Yes, yes.
Very good. Next on the agenda is activate games. Do we have someone here tonight? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name's Dave Demann. I work with Arco National Construction as the project manager on this job. This is an interactive arcade, about twelve thousand square feet, tenant improvement inside of Utica Place. This is more of a play area, kind of similar to Dave and Buster's, that we are building for activate games.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
There's not much more to it, we're just looking for final approval here on this tenant improvement job.
I know, I went on your website, it's super cool.
Yeah.
It's like a mix of a gym and an arcade and VR kind of feel.
Yes.
I think it's going to be really neat.
It's future, high-tech.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Trenzie. I do believe you received recommendation from planning.
Yes.
I don't think there was any concerns at all. I know there was a brief discussion about placement of the garbage can, which is typical on something like that.
And they also recommended review by the building department and fire department.
Right, I think that's just standard, standard procedure. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. That was easy, right?
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
Where are you going?
It's got to activate.
How do you spell his last name? Demann?
Demann.
That must have been a great name to ask.
Next on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty-four proclamation declaring the first day, first Friday in June, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to be National Gun Awareness Day in City of Utica. And I believe we have Mr. Neil Taylor here. As we have the, we've adopted this resolution now, I think this is a...
This is the fifth year.
The fifth year.
Hopefully the fifth year. Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and the Utica Council for putting us on the agenda again so we can proclaim June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, or Wear Orange Day, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. My wife Carrie and I are here tonight to ask the City of Utica to proclaim June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The purpose of this declaration and this day is to be aware of the epidemic that has been in America for many years and to recognize that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence and to recognize that gun violence is now the leading cause of death to children eighteen years old and younger. The City of Utica has supported this declaration since two thousand and twenty, and it has made a difference. We now have gun responsibility laws that protect the Second Amendment rights of gun owners and protect the lives of our children. Now we have the tools in Michigan. Gun violence awareness is all the more important to allow officials and law enforcement to act. I would also like to request the city hall be lit up in orange as it was done last year, and if possible, ask Jimmy John's Field to post the Gun Violence Awareness Day banner on its sign. Please wear orange on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to support National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Again, thank you for your consideration. Shall I read the proclamation?
Yes, sir.
It was great, there was a crowd here, and I was thinking I'm going to be doing this in front of a huge crowd. It's a little bit calmer now.
Not to make you nervous, but you're on TV right now.
They're all watching it on TV now, so.
Two thousand and twenty-four City Proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Utica, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day, a hundred and twenty Americans are killed by gun violence and more than two hundred are shot and wounded, with an average of nearly eighteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are twenty-six times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, in Michigan, has one thousand three hundred and eighty-two gun deaths every year with a rate of thirteen point seven deaths per hundred thousand people, a crisis that costs the state sixteen point eight billion dollars each year, of which three hundred and eighty point five million is paid by the taxpayer. Michigan has the twenty-fifth highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, in January two thousand and thirteen, Hadina Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age fifteen. And on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to recognize the twenty-seventh birthday of Hadina Pendleton, born June second, nineteen ninety-seven, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadina Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, by wearing orange on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Gus Calentrino of the City of Utica declares the first Friday in June, June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent tragic effects, the tragic effects of gun violence and honor and value human lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. We'd be looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzie, support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Neil, thank you, Carrie, for running the, organizing this every year, we appreciate it. I will work with Jimmy Johns, who's been very gracious every year so far in providing us the billboard space on that day, and I'm certain they'll do it again.
Thank you so much. I think it's important, I know some cities have made this a permanent proclamation, but I think bringing it here every year is very important, that we bring the awareness back. So, you know, I would always vote for coming every year rather than making it permanent.
And we get to see, we get to see you both every year, though.
There we go.
So we win.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Next on the agenda is the Compensation Commission recommendation, and I think City Attorney McGrill had...
Yeah, the motion actually, Mayor, should be to receive and file because according to the statute, the quote, "Determination shall be the salary unless the legislative body of the City of Utica by resolution adopted by two-thirds of the members elected rejects same. The determination of the commission shall be effective thirty days following the filing thereof with the city clerk unless rejected by common counsel."
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to receive and file the Compensation Commission recommendation, sir.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the item that we added, uh, just for council so they know. These two items that we had to amend the agenda for, they came in late, and they, uh, have time constraints. I apologize for adding this last, these two items last minute, but, uh, there was really nothing else we could do, so. The added item VF1 is signs for the Run Drugs Out of Town 5K Walk and Run. I believe we have the petitioner. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dunia Colano. I'm the Director of Operations at Families Against Narcotics. Our address is four three eight zero zero Garfield Road in Clinton Township. Um, so we're just here today, and I appreciate you adding us on last minute. This'll be the last council meeting before Run Drugs Out of Town, which is June thirtieth at Jimmy Johns Field. Our first year ever doing it at Jimmy Johns, so we're really excited. Um, but one of the technicalities is that we have to get sign, uh, approval to post signs. So every single year, in an effort to get folks to, um, sign up for the run, spread awareness, we post signs across Macomb County. And we want to make an effort to post some signs in the city of Utica. These are, like, eight-by-four signs that get, uh, like nailed in the ground, and then, um, we just post them, like, throughout. You, I, if you guys live in Macomb County, uh, I'm sure that you maybe have seen the signs before. Um, so we're looking for some locations to be able to do that. Um, specifically, I think Trinity Lutheran, and maybe a few other places as well. The signs go up June first and come down within forty-eight hours of the run.
And the run is on June thirtieth, right?
June thirtieth. And then one more thing before you guys make your decision. Um, uh, we were, we are asking if you can waive the permit fee for the signs.
Right.
That's it.
Madam Clerk, can you, you could probably do a better job of explaining this than I can, 'cause I'll muddle it up.
Explaining the permitting or the whole?
Yeah, as temporary signs, we normally only allow...
Okay, so temporary signs, if they were only twelve square feet, they would not need a, um, a permit or permission, because they were requesting signs that were six foot by four foot.
Okay. Yeah, there's a couple of different sizes.
They were twenty-four, uh, square feet, um, each, uh, they would require a permit. And the permits are a seventy-five dollar administration fee, and usually are eighty dollars each sign. Um, they it is a, they are raising money for, um, for a good cause, and so that is why they are asking for, um, council to raise those, or waive those fees. Um, you don't have any other, um, locations at this time, other than Trinity Lutheran?
No, I was actually, I mean, if you guys have any ideas, we'd be definitely open to talking outside of the council meeting or even here today, but we'd love to post them in a few places, just to, like, be able to build that sense of community that the run is coming to Utica. Um, so if anyone has any suggestions, um, of different places, I have a relationship with Pastor Lou, so I asked him, and that was kind of how that happened, but I think there's a few other places that we could go and, and visit and ask them as well. That's the idea.
I guess the the, the only concern I really have is we have so many races and events at Jimmy Johns, literally almost one a week.
Okay.
We could be, set, be setting precedents that we're allowing these temporary signs of any size throughout the city, right? Again, what you folks are doing is a fantastic, you know, you're a charity, you, you know, everything you do is fantastic. But I don't know, you know, if we really wanna set precedent on having temporary signs staked all throughout the city. That's really for council to decide. I personally would be willing to waive any fees, right? But in coming years, we probably would not, I would not support that on an ongoing thing.
Okay.
You know, we want the signs to conform and to the size where you would not be required to have a per, uh, permit fee, which is twelve square feet, I think you said, right? So really, I think you're kinda asking for two things, to, you haven't given us any locations, so it's gonna be difficult to just blanket approve.
I can, I, we have no problem providing you with the locations before, like, we put anything up. Typically, I have to do this, like, in the city of Sterling Heights, Roseville. We get the approval, and then we'll send them out the list before we're gonna go ahead and put the signs up. And you're welcome to tell us, hey, not there, or not on that side of the road. With the city of Sterling Heights, I work with their, um, Public Works, whoever, you know, is responsible for their signage in their community.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. How many of the larger signs are you looking to add into the city?
Honestly, maybe like two or three. Not a lot. Um, so if, I, I think it, it's really more so, I came today, it was kind of like a last minute, like, let's get this done before there isn't another city council meeting.
And, and the rest would be like yard signs, like, like a campaign sign-ish, the rest of the signs?
We will have signs all throughout Macomb County, and so really, the majority, we're gonna have probably a sign at Trinity Lutheran that's four by six, and then I'm hoping, like, something in downtown Utica, but in all honesty, I think the smaller signs would probably work better, like, in that business community that you guys in the restaurants and stuff like that. So really, between two and three at most.
Why don't we, we can, why don't we get a motion, and then we can deliberate after we...
Okay, sorry, I don't need to...
And then let's make sure it's for, uh, not to exceed three.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request, um, from Mrs. Calenno.
Yeah.
Uh, as presented with the addition of, in the motion to state that no more than three of the six-by-four signs, and as well in the same motion, sir, I'd like to, uh, agree to waive the fees for the permit for the signs.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Ryan, and now we can deliberate.
Boy, you got a lot of precedence you're setting here.
I know.
Three's not a big number, though, right?
Well, but that's, I'm, I'm not saying even just three.
Yeah.
But every group now can come to us, no matter who they are, and say, look, you did it for them, okay?
Sure.
Um, waiving the fees is a whole nother issue, and I understand the money that you'd be giving us isn't gonna go to your charity. So there has to be some type of stipulation, something, um, that would say one-time deal, or you pay their the, the processing fee, let's say the cost of what it takes for the city to process this, but waive the individual signs. I, I, I'm just afraid of, we've gone through this with other things, and what we do today affects what, what happens tomorrow. So, and I'm not trying to begrudge something.
Oh, absolutely.
But every charity, every run, every, everything is gonna wanna do the same thing, 'cause they're gonna say, look, we're raising money for this. So then we have this situation.
And how long will the larger signs be up?
A month.
A month, okay.
I will say, like, this is probably the largest run to ever happen at Jimmy Johns Field. Really different, and like, the planning, and just kind of like, everything that goes into Run Drugs Out of Town. And just the, um, manpower that we have. I don't know, like, if necessarily a lot of other organizations, I've never seen another organization put up, like, signs the way that we do for runs and stuff like that. It's, it's a lot of work. And so, um, if, if we have to pay for the fees, it's not, not a big deal. We, yeah.
I'm sorry, how many participants do you think you're gonna get?
Over a thousand.
I would, I would say that the, in this case, the juice is worth the squeeze, in my personal opinion, only because we're gonna get a thousand people, and their family members and spectators to come to the city. And that's advertisement for the city's sake. Come to Utica on this day. That's free advertisement for those signs. I think that is beneficial to the city to some degree. I get the precedence we're saying smaller runs, you know, but this is a thousand people, plus friends and family. Come to the city of Utica on that day. That means our restaurants are gonna be full, our streets are gonna be full. It's gonna feel like we have brought people here at zero cost to the city for advertisement. So I'm not against it.
And Ms. Colano, uh, jump in if I'm
Sure.
not communicating this properly, but when we approved the race several months ago, I believe you normally ran this in Frazier, but...
Yeah, so it's usually at Frazier High School. Um, we've had it there probably for the past fifteen years. It actually was gonna be at Frazier High School this year, but Macomb County is doing, um, construction on the road that we would run the race. And so we got really lucky with, um, supportive council and Jimmy Johns Field, and were able to make, like, a quick change to host the run here this year. And, um, I'm hoping that everyone really enjoys their time, so that way we can do it again.
And that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
'Cause we wanna make every effort to make you feel welcomed in Utica, and we want you back every year, right? We wanted this to be an annual thing that you do in downtown Utica.
I hope so.
And I understand the shortness of time, again, you know, my vote, my vote, I, I'm prepared to support this, but next year, I think you, you will have more time to figure it out.
Next year, I'll have locations for you guys ahead of time. We can, you know, like, all of that stuff. I, we have our location, like, I know everywhere else that these signs are going. I don't, I, I'm surprised that we don't have locations in this area already, um, from just how many years that we've...
Previous years.
Yeah, that we've done it, but maybe they were, like, private property or something like that, so, um, could be. But I will have all the locations. We usually start approvals, like, way ahead of time. This whole construction thing really, like, sent us for a swing of just kind of, um, being able to plan with you guys.
You, you see that I'm thinking.
I, I see it.
You see the smoke coming out. I'm kind of, I'm on the fence, and I agree with what Ken says about fees of setting precedence. And I understand exactly what Tom's saying. However, I wouldn't be opposed to waiving the fees for the signage, but the administration, we still have to do the work. So it's kind of a, a split. That, that's how I feel, that, that she paid for the administration, and then the signage be free.
Would we be, we wouldn't be generating permits, though, right? If we would be waiving the permits for these signs, or would we still be creating the permits and just not charging for them? How, what is, how is that gonna work, if this were to pass?
We wouldn't have to generate the permits if this happens.
So there wouldn't be any administrative cost?
So then there's no administrative costs.
Correct.
It does require a permit. According to ordinance, it does require a permit and approval from Utica City Council. I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you be willing to amend the motion to make it agreeable to Mrs. Torenzi's concept? I think that's a fair amendment.
I think it's fair. It's fair to the city, and, you know, and we're giving you a break, but at the same time, we're not going backwards.
I, I support his amendment.
Shall I remake it?
Yeah, restate your...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion to state, uh, we would agree to, the city would agree to, allow Mrs. Calenno and the Family Against, Families Against Narcotics to have the signs posted throughout the city, not to exceed three. And there would be administrative fee as per stated in the ord, as stated in the ordinance, um, for the processing or the administrative fee for those signs issuing the permits.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Ryan.
Do you need thirty days? I'm, I'm trying to lessen effects down the road. We don't, we don't give anybody thirty days on a temporary sign.
Well, everybody, we have a whole volunteer effort that happens on June first, where, like, twenty people are gonna get together and put all these signs up on one day. If there's certain stipulations, like, we're happy to accommodate if they need to be put up, like, two weeks ahead instead of thirty days. It just, we plant, like, June, the reason why I say June first is 'cause that's kind of like our, the volunteer day, where we're all gonna go out and post the signs all throughout Macomb County. And then typically, um, we try and get them down, like, the same day as the race, if not the next day.
But if you're only gonna have three signs in Utica, it's not gonna take a lot of volunteers if it's a different day to put the signs up. I, I just, I understand everything you're doing. For me, it's just lessening precedent setting.
Per the signed ordinance, there isn't a time limit on temporary signs, so. If they apply for the permit, that, there's really no...
So somebody could have a sign up for a year?
I...
I guess I need to start arguing at what point is it temporary versus permanent?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
That's not, I don't think that's defined in the ordinance.
And just to make sure, are we talking solely the four-by-six signs, or are we talking about the yard signs as well?
We're just talking about the four-by-six signs, so, um, and I think that they would probably, I'm assuming, we're gonna probably reach out to businesses on, like, the Van Dyke corridor. Just makes the most sense. So I don't think that they'll even really, there's gonna be three of them. I, like, just on Garfield alone, we probably have, like, fifteen signs, um, that stay up for, like, a month in Clinton Township.
Well, we should clarify then, 'cause your motion actually read to approve up to three signs, but should be up to three of the larger, not to exceed the three larger signs, or or that the smaller ones would...
I think I did say originally the four-by-six.
You did say originally.
Yeah. So, okay, then, go ahead, Mike.
Just in your motion, I think you need to stipulate that we are waiving the individual sign cost, correct?
Individual sign permit fee.
Yes, the individual sign permit fee, but not the admin fee.
Correct. I, I thought that's what we didn't know.
I think that is what you...
I, I think, I think that was part of it. That was the intention of this.
Yeah, I know, I know, that, that was the intention, but I don't think that's what was said.
Just put that in there.
Are you, yeah, but could you amend your...
Would you like a third, third motion?
I would like a third.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, here goes. See if I get this right. Remember, I was a C student in high school. So I would like to amend my motion, uh, for, uh, Ms. Calenno and the Families Against Narcotics to, uh, waive the individual fees for the smaller signs, and to waive the...
Well, there is no fee for the smaller signs.
Correction. Wa, waive the fees for the...
Larger signs.
Larger signs.
Four-by-six.
The, the signs not to exceed three. Those signs, larger signs are described as six-by-four-foot signs, and, uh, they would not negate the, uh, permit process. It still required permits, but without fees. Is that correct? Are we happy about that one? I'm feeling good about it.
I feel good.
Okay.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Ryan. Any further discussion?
Speak your piece, Ken. Again, I, I, I'm not against the actual signs. I'm not against the waiving of the fee, probably the bim sign. I'm now thirty days of just having thirty days of these big signs. Again, depending where they go, even on Van Dyke, if you put it right against the road, then all of a sudden you can have a visual traffic problem with, with drivers. If they're by a corner, you can't make a turn. So I guess everything still has to be subject to placement.
We make sure that we're, um, like, behind the egress, I, um, and it's typically on, like, private property. So, like, it, the reason we, we won't be on, like, city property.
Mayor.
Or anywhere where you guys would be, like, mowing the lawn and stuff.
The ordinance does say the temporary signs shall be set back not less than five feet from any property line, and in a manner so as not to project into or overhang any public right-of-way driveway or sidewalk. That is not being waived, so that would still be enforced.
Yeah.
And we could get you a copy of our sign.
We're very particular. Like, even with our volunteers, they have, we have, like, map photos of exactly where they need to place the signs. If they're not placed in the right place, I go out and move them. It's a lot of work.
Any further discussion?
They do already have a copy of the sign ordinance
Oh, okay.
with all the stipulations to follow.
Any further discussion?
I do think that twenty-four square feet is gargantuan. However, I think, uh, Councilman Deanne made a compelling case. Also, as a former nonprofit worker, I always have a soft spot for nonprofits, so I will, uh, be voting yes.
One last comment. So if they, to, again, eliminate future problems, is this a one-time-only thing? And should that be part of the motion, where this is not a ongoing, you don't come back next year? So anybody else that wants to do this also knows this is one, one and done.
Let's get it in the minutes, I think probably would suffice to make sure that we address that. This is a one-time, and we hope you come back to Utica next year, and when you do, we'll talk about six-by-two signs instead of twenty-four, twenty, whatever it is, six-by-four signs, right?
Yeah.
'Cause then you'll be within the requirements, the size requirements.
Sounds good.
Did you have anything else?
No, I just wanted to say, put the motion where the mayor's gonna run in the race.
Oh, I was gonna say, you guys, you guys better all be there on June thirtieth.
He's a runner.
We would love to have you.
I don't look like a runner. You have a walk, uh...
It's a walk and run.
Okay, maybe that.
Lots of walkers, lots of runners. I actually ran the route last weekend in the, in another 5K that they had, and it's beautiful. So I'm so excited. Yeah.
It's gonna be crowded on that little bike path, though, with the amount of runners you have.
Yeah.
It'll be great, though.
Yeah, it'll be really good. Okay, is there anything?
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to Utica.
See you guys on June thirtieth.
Bye.
Next on the agenda is Department Reports. I'll kick it off. First, I'd like to welcome Kimberly Northrup. She's our brand-new deputy treasurer. She started last week. She's been great, very cheerful. She seems to be enjoying her time in Utica, and she's working very hard with Phil to, to learn how to do her duties as deputy treasurer, so we welcome to the city of Utica. Very happy to have her. The Puppy Parade on April twenty-seventh was a smash success, uh, great attendance, better than the previous year. Uh, I'd like to thank all the local and, uh, officials who showed up. State Rep. Nate Shannon, uh, County Commissioner Sylvia Groat, uh, Mark Hackle. Boy, I can't even think of, there's a ton, so I'm not gonna think of everyone here, but it was very well... I'm not going to think of everyone here, but it was very well attended.
Sorry.
Yeah, Sheriff, Genesee County Sheriff Chris Swanson, the folks here that showed up. It was a great event. I look forward to doing it next year again. I was, a new business, organization came to me and they have a big interest in being like a key sponsor of the event. So I'm scheduled to meet with them to see what that means. Right now, the cost of the city is very small, like a box of Milk Bones to give out to dogs. So I haven't really pursued sponsorship for this event, but maybe we take it to the next level and, and see what they have in mind. So I'll be, I'll fill everybody in once I have that meeting to see, see what their ideas are. This Saturday, May 18th at 11:00 AM, there's a kayak ribbon cutting event at Heritage Park. Parks and Rec is doing a great job putting it together. The Macomb County Marine Division's going to be there, members of the U.S. Coast Guard and members from the Clinton River Watershed Council. So it should be a fun event. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there because I'm officiating a wedding and I'm speaking at the Relay for Life for the American Cancer Society at that time, so.
What's the date of it, Mayor?
May 18th, this Saturday.
At 11:00?
At 11:00. So if any of us can represent that, it would be great. Sounds like a really nice event. The water wheel sign at the Hall Road and Van Dyke intersection is done. Water's flowing again. I got quite a few comments from residents and visitors how happy they were to see it back in service. So great job by our DPW getting that repaired. We have a major storm, storm drain repair happening right now on Han and Van Dyke. We were fearful that we were going to have to close Han until the repair was finished. Thankfully, that was not necessary, but there are barricades around the excavation point right now. So I would ask any residents or commuters to be careful when they're driving near that intersection. We're trying to get it repaired as quickly as our, as we can. The downtown visioning project concluded on April 22nd. It was great. We had the folks from Michigan State University down. We had a handful of residents that showed up. That report has been posted on the city website. Lots of great ideas, obviously. Everything that they're recommending is just that, recommendations. If we move forward with any of those ideas, it would have to go through the normal approvals and budgeting considerations, but I recommend, everyone give that a read. There's some really great information in there. Just this afternoon, the DIA crew was out and installed all the art pieces for Inside Out Art. I think we have nine pieces, eight or nine pieces throughout the city. They look great. So there's going to be a bunch of programming coming over the summer associated with the art pieces. So get out and check those out. Very cool stuff. Memorial Day, we have a Memorial Day ceremony at Memorial Park on Sunday, May 26th at 2:00 PM. We have two very special guests. One is an active duty U.S. Navy guy who's going to come and speak to the attendees. And we also, if it can be arranged, have Jack Huffman. I don't know if everyone's familiar with his name. He is the gentleman who performs as Jack Skellington from Nightmare Before Christmas, right? Is that the movie? On stilts, he does our Christmas event with Santa suit on, on the stilts and he does a, he did our Nightmare on Auburn Road event as Jack Skellington last year. Well, this guy is basically superhuman. He's currently walking from California to Washington DC. Last I checked, he was in Indiana, I think. He's raising money for the, awareness for the Fallen and Wounded Soldiers Fund. And I've asked him if he's able to, if he gets back from DC in time to come and speak at our Memorial Day Ceremony. He said he would be honored if he's back and helping. So hopefully that will happen. I'd like to congratulate Officer Stewart, Officer Reese, I'm sorry, Officer Stewart, Officer Smale on graduation from the Macomb Police Academy. It was also my honor to attend the graduation ceremony for Sergeant Erdl from the Police Staff and Command School. It was a great event. I was happy to see our U.S. Congressman John James there supporting the event. Very nice event. Opening day for baseball is this Friday at Jimmy John's, so get ready for a brand new season of baseball. And finally, Weekend Unwind begins Friday, June 7th, 7:00 to 10:00 PM every Friday throughout the summer at Memorial Park. I will be post, I wanted to get past the kayak launch so I didn't flood people with too much information, but next week I'll be posting the full schedule. It looks like it's going to be a great summer of music. And that is all I have. Does anyone else from council have anything to?
Yeah, Faith and I, we went to La Quinta ribbon cutting this past week. That was pretty cool.
It was very nice.
Becky was there too, weren't you? No? I'm seeing Becky in places, so I'm. Yes. But yeah, it was a great event and yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I went on a run with Officer Sergeant Erdl yesterday and he invited me last year to go on a run with him, so I did. It was very fun, very insightful. And I would suggest that any council member that hasn't, go.
You want to try it?
I'll drive it.
Okay, mine is you too.
I've been on police runs with Mike.
I want to go on a ride along with Mike Ryan, yeah.
You can come and run a ride along anytime.
Anything else from council? Any other reports? Next on the agenda is planning, and I think Madam Clerk was going to cover those items.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the master plan for 2024 to 2029 has been adopted by the Planning Commission at this month's meeting after a 45-day public review period. And I just wanted, it was more of a, let you know that that happened. Sorry. So no, no necessary motions for the master plan.
Thank you.
Next in the packet is amending general code, section 6-38 about kennels. We're amending kennels prohibited to allow for kennels within the zoning districts where they are currently regulated and permitted by right, which is C2, General Business District, Mixed Use District and Industrial District. Previously, the ordinance sections were contradictory and this is a change, this change will remediate that issue. So I would be looking to, for a motion to adopt the ordinance changes as presented. Oh, okay.
Motion by Ryan, support by Terencey. Any discussion from council?
So does this just expand the zoning districts that one can have a kennel?
I can address that if you want. So when we had that business come in that was putting in a kennel, I think in downtown Utica, I looked and we, our kennel ordinance said that kennels are not allowed anywhere in the city and a kennel was defined as, I think, three or more dogs or animals. And so this is, what this has basically done is saying that we can't have them in a residential area, but they can be allowed in the other area. And that also coincides with what our zoning ordinance said. So our kennel ordinance and our zoning ordinance were one in conflict, but then also was going to create a problem for some of these businesses, even like PetSmart, you know?
Dotopia.
Yeah, Dotopia.
Burke, Burke Avenue on Utica Road.
That amendment, the one that said kennels are not allowed and they're defined as three or more animals stemmed from an issue of a residence that had, and Chief Klosny may remember it in more detail, but there was something like 50 animals in a home and they had to come and remove the animals because it's obviously an abusive and sad situation. So, but the ordinance at the time didn't address that, so it was amended after that.
Thank you.
I think we have, do we have motion and support?
Yes, by Ryan and Terencey.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And I think this requires being published and it won't actually be enacted or in effect until it's the published date. Is that right?
Correct.
Nothing tonight from assessing or building? Ms. Francis from the library.
Hello. I'm just going to briefly mention a couple of things about summer reading, the fact that it's coming up. Registration begins in a few weeks. We have a couple of field trips coming up to the library that we're getting prepared for to remind all the kids that it's coming up. So anyone listening that's interested, we are doing a couple of repeats that have been fun, bounce houses. We have Reptarium coming back. That's always a fan favorite. New thing we're going to do is an escape room and I have, my children's librarian right now is planning to do some sort of downtown scavenger hunt that's going to include the businesses. So I'm eager to find out how that's going to end up, but it's, it's going to be fun and I can't wait and just look for more information in the next couple of weeks for that, for all that good fun stuff. So yeah, that's all I got tonight.
Thank you. Chief Philsec, fire.
Yeah, Mayor and council, before you were asking for an adoption of a non-emergency cost recovery ordinance. This really mainly applies to our facilities that house our seniors or those who had our handicapped that really don't keep enough staff on duty and they're calling upon us to put people back in beds, get them out of chairs and everything else, which they're supposed to have staff to provide for that. They're charging for it. So we're getting a little bit of abuse surrounding communities. Sterling Heights, Clinton Township have already adopted these ordinances just to get our money. We're not making money at it, but just to cover the cost for our public residents that support us paying taxes. It would require two motions. Motion to adopt the ordinance and then a motion to adopt the response fee for $446, which was determined by the fire chief's BLS ambulance response for one hour and administrative costs for the city.
I'll make a motion to adopt the non-emergency cost recovery ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Terencey. Any discussion from council? I would like to add that we just got through most of our budgeting and we noticed that our EMT went from basically break even in, what, 2020? To 200 and something thousand net deficit. So this is very necessary to try to get at least these, a self-sustaining model for our ambulance services.
And this is billing the facility, not the patients.
Right.
So hopefully they'll, they're supposed, they're, they're required to have Hoya lifts and all this other stuff to put these people back up. We just got a phone call Sunday for, to put somebody in a chair into bed, you know, and that was a staff member calling. So it's, it's getting to be where it's abusive and I guess since COVID, you know, everybody has Manning problems and staffing problems and, well, we have the same thing, you know, we, you're taking a life support ambulance out of service for a, you know, citizen assist call, so.
Sterling Heights adopted an ordinance about two years ago and Clinton Township adopted pretty much the same ordinance in January.
Yeah, Chief Edmonds from Sterling said it's cut down quite a bit on there, responses to those facilities, so.
So like when you charge someone, do you expect that you'll, will get paid for that, reimbursed?
Just to be clear, the fee goes to the facility, not the individual.
Okay.
Yeah, see, most of these fees are not covered by Medicare or Medicaid for putting people back in, into bed. That's undeniable.
But it's costing us.
Right. You're, you're paying to have that personnel and ambulance responding.
And it's also taking our EMT off, out of service for legitimate emergencies, right?
Yeah.
No, I'm not opposed. I think it's, it's great. I was just thinking about, you know, are we going to get, if, if people do continue to abuse it and we're charging them a fee, are we going to get that fee back?
I think there's.
I mean, that's problem collection on anything, but I think the other two municipalities have seen a great reduction in the amount of non-emergency calls as a result of.
Okay, that's what the purpose is.
And that's what the.
More than anything.
So Chief, would this be something that you would let them know via letter or something or would just, they would be finding out?
I would probably suggest that we contact all facilities with a certified letter. So someone has to sign for it and they recognize that they got it. That would be my advice. I mean.
As much transparency possible when it comes to.
That way they can't deny that they didn't know about it.
Yeah, because as it currently stands, like if we go for a lift assist, the bill goes to the resident, even though they're already paying for services through the facility. Now they're getting an extra care, extra cost put on top of them because the facility is lazy.
Which is why they don't care that they call you.
Yeah, which is why they don't care they call us. Yeah. Which is then taxing us in the long run.
Well, at a proposed fee in the next motion of $446, you, if it's a matter of money, staffing, that you can pay for staff, extra staff member on a shift very quickly with that type of fee, if they're going to run up that many calls, so.
And our fees weigh nowhere near, I think Sterling Heights charges $800.
Yeah, Clinton Township is, I think, 400, but they're, they're sending fire engines out.
Yeah.
And they have.
And they have, if they go by the Fire Chiefs Association, engine first hour is a lot more than ambulance first hour costs.
Yes.
So we can justify this by using what we used and we can prove that we're not making a profit. It's, we, we can justify why we're charging that, so.
So do we have a motion and support?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Were you going to make the second motion?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead, sir.
Make a motion to adopt resolution of fee for providing a non-emergency response to $446 per occurrence and 10% delinquency penalties.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Socora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else to report, Chief?
We got the engine delayed, so we'll be receiving that after the 1st of July and should be, I don't know if they'll deliver it the fourth, the week of the fourth, but it'll be first two weeks probably in July, you'll have your new truck.
Excellent.
You'll be in Grand Rapids next week?
Yes. It'll be at the next chief show in Grand Rapids, surely, so.
Great.
Okay.
We're getting a lot of free advertisement with this thing, aren't we? Chief Klosny.
Good evening, Mayor and council, including your packet as agenda item summary, and this is for two traffic control orders. The first one is traffic control order 24-02. Now, earlier this year, I approached council regarding traffic control order 24-01, and that's regarding signage on Canal Road. What we ran into was vehicles were actually driving on the shoulder, driving onto residents' lawn to pass vehicles that were waiting to either pull into somebody's property or something like that. The original traffic control order just covered the south side of Canal. While upon putting the signs up there, we started receiving numerous calls from the residents on the north side who are kind of experiencing the, the same type of issue. So this traffic control order would rescind the first one and would, would bring signage now on both sides of Canal, on the north side and the south side. So I'd be looking for a motion to request approved traffic control order 24-02, which rescinds 24-01, and have DPW order two additional no-driving-on-shoulder signs and install them according to in the traffic control order.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Terencey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The second issue I, or second order I have here is traffic control order 24-03, and, and this one really came to light from the DPW supervisor. DPW is receiving numerous complaints along Cutting Street between Hall and Summers with vehicles parking on the shoulder resulting in damage, resulting in their guys having to go out, repair the grass and, and maintain the area over there. So I'd be looking for a request, a motion to approve traffic control order 24-03, and that would have DPW order five no-parking signs and install them on the east side of Cutting between Hall Road and Summers.
So moved.
Support.
all facets of administration. So it's really a tremendous program, and it's really an honor to now have two graduates of Northwestern Staff in Command here on the department. And I'm really excited to have him bring a lot, a lot of some of the updated things and new, new ideas in administration to the department. So I just really like to take a minute and thank him for his dedication, because it was not, you just don't show up in class and get the diploma. He put a lot of, a lot of effort into the class, so it's really tremendous effort. So I just like to add that. And finally, I'd also like to thank Mayor Calendrino for a lot of his hard work in going through these grants and stuff. I know I mentioned this during, during budget season and stuff, but Mayor Calendrino is really instrumental in getting a grant from Gary Peters' office, which resulted in $153,000 coming to the police department that's going to purchase all our body cams and all our in-car vehicles, and that comes at a cost of $0 to the tax residents. There's, there's zero match required on it, so it's really going to be, it really was a tremendous thing. So from the police department, we really like to thank the mayor for his hard work in getting that grant through.
Time to get started for next year, right?
Absolutely.
Great work on that. That's fantastic.
Anything else, Chief?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. DPW, Mr. Diamond is excused tonight for family matters. I think Madam Clerk has a brief, I'm sorry, deputy clerk has a report from him.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mr. Diamond apologizes for missing consecutive council meetings, but requested an approval, proved absence to attend her, his daughter's senior year honors night. He has no items on the agenda tonight, but thank you for your approval of last meeting's request. He has some quick updates here. The Water Wheel has been completed and installed. DPW has, lot has been paid with the remaining approved funds from the Summer DPW Lots Project. Thanks to Bob and Brian Oliver and their crew from Toll Asphalt for doing a tremendous job. Thank you to council for approving the repaving. Hopefully, in 2026, we can look into completing the rest. They are working on the 2023 Consumer Confidence Report, which is due to Eagle the 1st of July. They've done weeding at Memorial Park. The city building's lot is in progress, and the new mulch will be installed. They have cleaned up, they're scheduling a cleanup on Sunday where DPW will be giving Van Dyke some much-needed attention from Hall Road to the northern limits, repainting the Xs that are, are being scheduled as well. They continue to work on repairing the stage for the summer music festivals. The sewer lining project prep work has begun with DVM Utilities is out and televising the selected sewers that are being lined. They have a bid for, posted for the Pioneer Park Pavilion Project with opening on May 30th and ready for approval at the next, at June's meeting. The Davis Lift Station delivery is expected in late June, early July, fingers crossed. Meeting with Midwest Power tomorrow to confirm dimensions and layout for the new equipment. The lamp post replacements are ongoing, and banner installation has begun. It was right in front of Jimmy John's today, they were. And the DIA Inside-Out artwork was installed today and throughout the city.
Thank you very much. Nothing from Treasure tonight. Madam Clerk?
Mayor and council, in your packet was information for a new postage machine that needs to be purchased for the city office. Our current machine is about 13 years old, so we have gotten our use out of that, but we're replacing it because the United States Post Office has adopted new technology called Intelligent Mail Indica, sorry, IMI. And as of June 30th of this year, our postage machine does not have that technology, so we won't be able to. We've received quotes from Pitney Bowes and Quadient, and we are asking for a motion to approve the purchase of Ascend Pro C mail system from Pitney Bowes for $3,229.87 from Office Equipment. This was budgeted for, we knew it was coming. So that would be my first motion.
Yeah, let's just stop there.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Socora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. And my second motion would be to enter into contract with Pitney Bowes for monthly meter rental of $45.25 and a yearly maintenance and support agreement in the amount of $333.60 from the postage GL line. Sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Socora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Anything else to report?
I believe that's it for now. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, the chairman was not able to make it this evening. She asked that we just remind everyone about the kayak ribbon cutting, which I think we already covered. So, yeah, should be a fun event. Heritage Park. Nothing from Historic. City Attorney, Ms. McGrill.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Ballpark GSE has approached the city to ask if they could use the parking lot on Chapitown west of Ronell to do some employee parking during the baseball season. In order to accomplish that, if council still chooses, I did draft up what I call the proper use agreement. You'll see in the use agreement that's attached here that it's still subject to approval of the city and sole discretion as to when, where, and how it may be used. So, you know, say we have an event, or we need to use that parking lot for something else, that would still be, the mayor could say, well, you can't use it this day or wherever. It's terminable at will by the city. The main purpose of this is to provide for an indemnification provision, so if, you know, anyone gets hurt out there, the Ballpark has to indemnify the city, and then also to require that GS put the city as an additional insured on their insurance with a policy of not less than $1 million per occurrence.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ryan.
Support.
Support by Deanne. Any discussion?
If I remember right, they're still using the parking lot of DPW as well?
Yeah, that's under.
So this is, this is, this is in addition to, correct? Okay, that's all.
What they said is their intention is just to have employees, and in all truthfulness, they've been doing this for years. And they shuttle bus the employee, it's only employees, and they shuttle bus them from the Chapitown parking lot to the baseball field. So it's not their patrons. It'd be a long haul for them.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else to discuss tonight?
Nothing further.
Nothing further. At this point, we open up the floor for communication from the public for anything not necessarily on the agenda, anything at all. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone?
Do either of you want to say?
I think you guys have to flip a coin and one of you do it.
All too public.
Well, as there is no public comment, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Socora. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes. Motion carries.